All right, well, good evening. I would like to call the meeting into order at 6:00 PM on Monday, May 11, 2020. Please stand with me and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance, we the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. A little more in attendance, which is kind of nice, so we appreciate that. Just a few opening remarks here first. This meeting is a meeting of the school board in public for the purpose of conducting the school corporation's business, and is not to be considered a public meeting. There will be time for public participation as indicated by Agenda Number Four. The mission of Goshpea School is inspire innovation, empower potential, enriching our world, and our vision. To be Goshpea Schools Indiana's premier global school district of choice. Going on to Item 1.4, Approval of Tonight's Agenda. Do we have any additions or agenda?
Yes, the administration has one addition to the agenda tonight. We'd like to add an item to the agenda. And its reports acknowledging the presence of Blake Doreos here tonight. A few words, I'll just leave that that. So that'll make that our first agenda item.
Oh, I'm sure you all wanted to know about money.
You'll get your chance in a second.
Revenue's are tight. I'm here for something much more important.
You'll get an opportunity, hold on, not quite yet.
Not quite yet.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we gotta add to the agenda first.
Okay.
Hold on. Any other additions to the agenda?
That's the only addition.
All right. So with that addition, the agenda is approved as presented. And then Item 1.4, or sorry, 1.5, Approval of the Minutes from our April 27, 2020 meeting. Any additions to those minutes? Nothing to that. And then just quickly, so we have four board members in attendance tonight. And Jose Elizalde, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Mario Garber, are you online? And Felipe Marina, are you online? But we do have. There's Mario. Can you say hi, Mario? Or wave? He's waving, okay, so we got it. So we have a four. All right, so with that, we will go to Item 2, Superintendent's Reports, and Item 2.0, Senator Dory. You may have to.
Now, you can start differently this time, saying you have lots of.
Okay, we'll say they did release 190 million of federal money. The governor's supposed to get 60 more million that has to be spent at his discretion. And I heard there's another 40 coming down the pike. I wish it was all coming to my district, but it's not. And I had a nice chat with Senator Rotz. I gotta leave, I'm having back surgery on Wednesday. To this afternoon, and his goal is to have, as he said, butts in the chairs. Ball. And then be ready to be a match if this thing comes back. One thing they talked about was maybe staggering students in the classroom and homeschooling. For every other week, to have social distancing if required. And then, God help us, to be ready to maybe close down. And that's what we don't want to do. So, and we're, we're committed to get you as much money as we can. But, you know, we're burning through our unemployment fund rapidly. And we're gonna be burning through our rainy day fund. And so we'll do our best for you. So with that, that's what I'm gonna tell you about money. I wish I had a better report for you. But, on to better things. Diane, would you come here, please? So, we were, we talked about Diane leaving and what could be done for her. And so. No, no, so. I applied to the governor for Circle of Corden Award. That's a relatively new award that is given out by legislators. And so here it goes. "To all whom these present may come greetings, whereas the early leaders of our state gathered in Corden in 1816 to adopt the first constitution and to create the state of Indiana. Whereas Corden was the first capital and center of leadership in the early and formative years of our state. Whereas the founders of our great state, many others have made remarkable contributions, betterment of Indiana and its people, and therefore deserving consideration for membership in the Indiana General Assembly's Circle of Corden. Whereas I, Senator Blake Dory, has made it known, the illustrious benefactor of one Dr. Diane Woodward, who demonstrated in line in his service to the people of the state of Indiana, qualities exemplified of our state's greatest citizens. Herefore, in having been deemed worthy of such recognition, the above-named individual is hereby declared to be a designated member of the Circle of Corden." I'm sorry, I can't, I have to.
Oh, thank you so much. I mean, there's something going on. We're gonna be moving to the high floor, obviously, and some other pressure over, so. Hi, thank you. Someone get your family up here. Okay.
With their masks.
My kids and my grandkids.
It's a nice room.
It's a nice room.
Shouldn't be.
Thank you all for coming.
You have more questions for me?
Should I introduce them? Sure, okay. So, take me down now. My husband Todd, my daughter Clara Elizabeth, my oldest son Jesse, his wife Ariana, their son Lyndon, our second son Luke, and his wife Brady, and Louis Martin, and Julian. It's so fun having three little brains, so thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Senator Dory. They're not gonna stay? I mean, it's kind of like. All right, we will move on to, it's hard to follow now. All right, we'll go to Item 2.1, which is our third quarter financial report.
If you're the senator, I'm not sure. Okay, so the good news is tomorrow, we will be selling the second half of our referendum bonds. And we received a double A-plus stable rating for long-term, and our online rating is an A. So it's affirmed, it's really good, so we should get an excellent rate. So we'll be starting that sale tomorrow morning, and it will last until we've sold the first $5 million in bonds, which is the second half worth of projects. So, going into our, our third quarter financial update. Sorry. But they, they haven't. This is all of our budgeted funds that we'll be talking about tonight. And March only had a couple weeks of things that were going on within COVID since the shutdown. And it's also important to note that we have been paying all of our staff their full salaries. So there is not a whole lot of savings, other than some instances of a little bit less utilities, a little bit less supplies. But because we're educating the students often, we're doing the food program, we're delivering, we're kind of breaking even on where we would have been at those costs to current. But we'll go, we'll go through March, and then I can give you a little bit more update about where we are today. So on this slide, this tells you where we were last year and where we are today. So it's important to note that although we have spent a little bit more money, we've spent a less percentage of our budget, and it bothered that to do with timing. When our cooperative, if you look at our cooperative payments, under special education, what we pay here today, and what we paid here today before, it's almost $300,000 more. And we also had some other payments that came through within the first quarter with the way the timing was, it's just a timing difference. So overall, we are right on target and look like to be a little bit ahead on budget. So the next slide shows you our expenses by program. It was like to show what we're spending on instruction, because that's why we're here. So as you can see, we have 56% of our budget is spent. These are budgeted funds, again, that would be operations, education, rainy day. And then we also include school nutrition in this as well. So we have spent in 17.75% support instructional, that would be paras, that would be our licensed classified speech pass, and a lot of the folks that work in special education. And then we're spending 25.96% on operations support. So that's your custodians, your bookkeepers, your secretaries, and those that don't have direct instruction. So we're spending our money where it should be spent, and then the percentages that it should be. Can you go to the next slide? This gives us the expense by type, and again, you can see that the bulk of our money goes to certified and non-certified salaries, adding in benefits, it's almost 90% of our budget. So the rest of everything else goes into that little tiny percent. And you see the contracted services at 2.43%, that's where we pay our cooperative bills and contracted services. That's where that is. And schools nutrition was around 3%. So those two programs are really taking up the rest of us. So there's very little percentage that's spent on anything besides direct program with students. Go to the next slide. So the project information, like you said, we just had our rating call today to finish up to sell for tomorrow. We started with the hail damage that was a year ago on New Berth. So we're coming up on that phase one to three, the Berth's have started, which are most of the buildings. Phase four was for approval tonight, and that's our athletic building, Rose. Phase five is in mechanical, and that's starting. And phase six, it's the metal and the fillings, they would just, and the admin roof is also the final approval for the final stage. We've already approved the concept, but I want to make sure that we have the rest of that in here. The structural repair in this building, as you see, as Dr. Woodward mentioned, all the boxes, that begins on May 18. And we were able to move that schedule up about three weeks, which should get it out of here at times. And we also have commissioned an asphalt study for all of our parking lots in asphalt in the corporation to do boring tests and other tests to see where we need to replace and put a timing on that. Challenges ahead, I could just say coronavirus and sit down. We're reviewing all of our expenses this year. We've been moving towards this direction in the past three years, but this year, we will be going to zero-based budgeting. We'll be working with the staff and Dr. Woodward, who next several weeks, and then Dr. Hope will be moving into that role to talk with everyone about every expense, taking it down to zero, and then deciding what we have to fund, and looking at each line item. Like I said, we've been moving towards that for several years, but now we'll be finalizing that and doing that for everything. Funding, we have been awarded, by the time of the non-public schools that we have to allow, have some of our funding from the CARES Act, for about $800,000. That is going until the end of December of 2021. So we, Mayor Kay is in charge as program director. We've been listening to lots and lots of webinars between that and FEMA, Public Assistance. So we are not budgeting that yet. We're keeping that kind of on the back burner to replace any stacking funding and things maybe going forward, and to also make decisions that are more methodical than jumping ahead and using it to, it's a reversible fund to, you know, buy cleaning products or anything. Because right now, we're on target with our budget, so we're kind of holding that to see where we really need it, and not going ahead with that until we're much more methodical. FEMA, we had actually a webinar today that is for, we're qualifying under the emergency management. We do not really know how much we're qualified for yet. And, you know, we don't know what the whole pot of money is, and that's every school corporation in the country has the ability to happen through this funding. So we are, we are working to look at costs that have, they have to be directly related to our COVID response. So it could be overtime for students, it could be chemicals that we purchased, it could be Plexiglas that we might have to purchase to surround desks that are, so the public masks, the gloves, those types of things. It can also be the difference in our food program from what we receive from USDA for the school lunch program, and our additional cost for like gas to deliver, which we normally wouldn't have. So those are the things that we're looking to submit, and it is, but it is also reversible. So Mayor Kay is working with us, along with Cheryl Gray from the high school, has been helping us gather all the documentation for that, to work on that grant. We do not know all the deadlines at this point. And they started to tell us today, but there's a lot more to wait through. So we'll give you some more updates to see more about that. Next slide. Again, we, we're looking at proper resources for online learning. We've always had a really good department in technology that works very well with the devices that we have, but we're looking at alternative funding sources and how that will work long-term. The amount that we're using things in the plan, like the senator said, for kind of that hybrid to plan for the worst-case scenario, we're using those devices at a much heavier level than, you know, was originally planned. Sustainability, those things. So we're working together as a team to decide how we could fund that and how we sustain that. And enrollment, I mean, that's kind of the big if for every school district in the country who will be there in the fall, or if will be there in the fall. It's very unknown at this point. We'll get more information as time goes by. And still continuing to not lose sight of the big picture, which is why we're here. So are there any questions about where we're at currently?
So we got $800,000 allotted to us from the CARES Act?
We had about 880 and some change, but when we take out, originally, they allocated the money to non-public schools based on the Title I formula. Then the feds decided to reinterpret it as the Title II allocation, and we're again. That gives them a lot more money than they would have been allotted under that. So we're estimating, you know, we're just calling it even $800,000 till we get those final numbers. So, yeah, that's where we landed on the allocation. So when you saw that amount allocated to school districts under the CARES Act, and that's the first number that the senator spoke of, that's that money. The other is the governor's money for education that is distributed based on what the governor of the state, each state, how they want to distribute that. I don't believe that information's out yet. If it is, I haven't seen it, but, I mean, so we don't know how the governor will allocate that, if it's gonna be based on poverty, or if it's gonna be based on just a flat amount like ABMS. We just don't know that, and that's a smaller part of money.
Other questions? Thank you very much, fellas. All right, we will go to Item 2.2, which is a learning, our e-learning update. We are getting this virtually. Yes, just to update quickly on e-learning, I think working with our schools and our teachers and staff that work really hard along with our technology department. I think, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, we only have about 17 families that currently do not have internet connection. So out of that, out of the 6,500 students that.
It's about 17. We do have some that actually have not picked them up yet, but we accounted for all but handful of payments.
So some people have been asking some questions about some of our special programming. What are, what is our classified staff doing during this time? What is, what is the dual-language immersion program look like at Waterford? So tonight, I have Mrs. Williams from Chandler, and then this is Brock from Waterford that will do a real brief kind of overview of what that, what that looks like. So we will start with Cheryl Williams. Cheryl, are you on?
I am, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so just to give you a brief snapshot into e-learning, all of us were, you know, left one day and just thought we might be gone for a few days, and it's turned into something different. So we have really shifted our thinking really about not being about just giving assignments, but about teacher instruction and being able to see student learning. So we really tried to shift our thinking, and in that, we have worked with our classified staff to see how we can get them involved. And we originally targeted around 55 students. And we are currently working pretty regularly with about 45 of those students. So between our paras and our Title I instructors, our librarian, we have Zoom meetings that are happening, they're one-to-one tutor sessions, and there are sessions that happen for reading, for writing, for math. It just depends on what the teacher thinks that student needs to focus in on. So it might be just helping them to get through the learning that's been assigned to them. Or it might be something specialized that the teacher says are really struggling with this concept. Can you work on this one concept with them? So we're really excited about the learning that we're doing. We really have focused in, focused in on four criteria. One of those is modeling, how are we modeling to show students what we expect? Giving students choice so that they are hopefully engaged. Feedback, whether that's teacher to student, or setting up things where it can be student to student, and really being able to get students to show us their thinking, and not just send us something back where, did mom do it, did dad do it, did they do it, who did it? But really to get kids to show us what they're thinking and what they're doing. And so if I'm not mistaken, I think we, to wrap it up, just have a very quick video that I had Andrew Kaufman put together, and I think we're.
Coming up, thank you, Cheryl.
We'll end with that.
I am on, hello, good evening. Thanks for inviting me to discuss the great things happening at Waterford. I appreciate the opportunity. The current situation, as we know, is not ideal, but our teachers have gone above and beyond, just as you can see with Chandler, how exciting it is that they're getting other teachers involved as well. So I just want to say how proud I am of all their work, and I know you're hearing that. I think you just need to hear that from us as well, we're very proud. So I've been asked to discuss a little bit about dual language. Currently, dual language at Waterford is in kindergarten, first and second grade. At school, we're at school, they would be in Spanish half the day, learning math and science, and some reading and writing reinforcement. Then they would spend the other half of their day with reading and writing in English with math, science, and social studies reinforcement. So our teachers also spent some time earlier this year with professional development, creating some units of study around an essential question within the science and social study standards. And this not only supported inquiry within the classroom, it also supported that language acquisition across content areas in both classrooms. And it was a great way to connect the two separate classrooms into one. So e-learning definitely has changed the way in which we deliver dual language in some aspects. Our dual-language teachers have created combined Canvas courses, whether they're not separate now, they're together. The assignments for each subject are translated in both English and Spanish. However, the instruction is still being delivered in that focus language. So reading and writing are taught primarily in English, and math, science, and social studies are taught in e-learning primarily in Spanish. And our teachers are continuing to use that unit approach, tying in the science and social study standards to reading and writing instruction. So some things I just really want to highlight of their instruction. They are pre-recording teacher videos where they're modeling, and they're downloading those onto Canvas with a limit of like five to seven minutes each that the kids can watch that and then do an activity based on that. Two of the apps that are widely used with teachers are Reading A to Z and iReady, and both of those are available in Spanish. So those assignments are being pushed out in English or Spanish, depending on what the teacher wants at that time. Students are submitting assignments through Canvas, Flipgrid, and Seesaw. And through Zoom meetings, they are sharing a lot of their work with each other and providing feedback. So all of those things really are a great way for teachers to provide students feedback, but also students to provide feedback to one another. Our dual-language teachers, some of the strengths that they really want to say are that communication with parents. We've always had great communication with parents, but we feel it's still going very well, even with e-learning. They're reaching out if they need support, and teachers are reaching out. They're reaching out if they need support and teachers are re-reaching out um to students. Um very pleased with assignment completion, high percentage of work completion with our dual language classroom. We have about ninety percent of all students doing all work. And then just overall participation is very um making those teachers super happy that they're getting on Zoom and they're participating with each other. So I would say comparable to other classrooms that are not dual language, there's a high percentage of Zoom um participation. So I do want to say that, you know, as a student of a or as a parent of a student in the dual language program, I I can see it from a different perspective and I'm I'm thrilled with what we're doing. And um we don't speak Spanish in our home and thinking about dual language being an immersion program, that's kind of where we're falling short. They're not getting immersed in the language for a few hours a day, but they're doing everything they can to to get through this period of time. So um you know, there's going to be some struggles and we'll continue to focus on what we're doing well and um then we'll analyze those things and and make a plan as we move forward.
Thank you, Karen. Uh any questions from the board?
I appreciate everyone's dedication uh getting us through this because it's not been easy and it's exciting to hear that we're still reaching out to students like we are and all of them trying to move forward. So appreciate it very much. Thank you both.
Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, we will move on to item two point three, which is an assessment update.
Uh yes, uh about six years ago, um Goshen Community Schools was looking for a benchmarking tool uh to give um measure student progress about three times a year um at grade level. Uh and we went with NWEA, which is a product we had had in the past and has had very good results in allowing us to to monitor growth over a period of time. However, um one of the th- concerns that we've had is the time that it takes per subject, which is approximately forty minutes. We have some kids that, of course, finish earlier and we have some kids that go much longer than the forty minutes. Um so the time the time assessing for that and what we were getting uh beyond being able to goal set, um if we look at intervention and progress mon- monitoring along the way, NWEA was not giving us necessarily what we wanted to wanted. Um with the new dyslexia assessments, we were able to give the screeners in NWEA, but because of how they um structured the reporting piece, um we were unable to get the reports when we needed them like months. It took it took weeks to get the reports back. Um so um Mrs. Noe has been working with um a committee uh on multi-tiered systems of support, um looking at how do we intervene for students who who need that and have been looked have been looking at other assessment products that not only will do um both benchmarks at every three months, but will allow us to give shorter, smaller, very specific uh progress monitoring assessments along the way um that takes approximately about half of the half of the time that we have. The other piece that it really has is it has a um called Sabers, which is the social, academic, emotional, and behavioral risk screener. So uh we're able to give um students a screener for social, emotional um behaviors to see and hopefully identify students who might be at risk for for some um some of those factors and hopefully then intervene with them, get them hooked up through our counselors, through our partnership with Oaklawn and the Owen Center. Um so we feel that FastBridge um will give us um more than we're getting currently with NWA, uh less time assessing and also bringing us social emotional.
So we will begin using it to start of next year, is that?
Yeah, we are waiting for um that they are up for the IDO approval list for assessments that can be paid through the assessment grant. Um so we're we're waiting to hear whether they will get approved, which will be the first week of June, but we're almost ninety percent sure that they will. Um it's a fairly new product, but not new to um only new to Indiana. It's it's very well-used across the country in California and Michigan. FastBridge. Um so Indiana just had to go through their steps to get them on the approval list. Um we have a meeting this week to kind of map out what training would look like and what would be the long-range plan for implementation. Uh but we'll wait until we know for sure that we can use the assessment grant to fund it um and move forward then for sure.
The formative assessment grant uh pays totally pays for NWA currently and um would cover um FastBridge. Also, FastBridge is actually a little cheaper, which would allow us to use the remainder on some of the other assessments that we have within the district.
This is the same company that we have currently do our interim assessments from alumni. So it's it's an offshoot of them, but the same company. So they they can connect with everything we do with our interim and hold to some three three times a year reliability kind of grade level pieces because the interim assessments are made by us. I mean, we have baked the questions, but they're made by us, whereas this will offer that just against others across the nation, not just what we've created here. We had a big gap with our multi-tiered systems of support for students and knowing what to intervene with them and when to intervene and how long to intervene and then monitoring all that work along the way. And we we're pretty hopeful um based on the trial run that we've done before COVID, but it kind of got stuck in the middle. But um had quite a few people giving it a try, taking a look at it and came back and said, yeah, this is exactly the gap that we're having trouble billing with NWA.
So if there is an off chance that our grant won't pay for it, which is a small chance.
There's always a chance.
Do we still proceed forward with it?
Um I that will be up to finances, but I'll probably not at this point.
Now, if it's not approved by the state, then.
We would not.
So then we'll have to make.
Stick with one of the other state.
We'll have to decide whether we even hold on to NWA at that point because, you know, the real reason for assessing is that you can make instructional decisions and you can see what students need. Um and NWA has done that to a point, but it's really, it's missed some of the pieces that really make instruction different because of the.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you all very much.
All right, we will move on to uh item number three, which is board committee reports and three point one, Parks Department.
Um no report. We'll have a meeting next Monday.
Uh three point two is music council. Ms. Elzade.
Uh no report.
Athletic council? Building trades report?
Uh nothing additional to add. Next board meeting, I should have, we should have the house sold.
Uh three point five, childcare.
Uh no report. I can't imagine we'll be meeting anytime soon.
Appreciate it. Uh three point six, uh Community Schools Foundation.
Uh we are meeting tomorrow morning via Zoom.
Uh three point seven, legislation. No report.
No, I I don't know if any of you attended the the spring ISBA um um Zoom meeting, but that's where where they've got a complete rundown in the year, so it's very useful and those materials are available.
And lastly, three point eight redevelopment. Uh we actually meet tomorrow, so no update. All right, we will move on to item four, public comment. Uh so if anyone would like to comment on a non-agenda item, this is your opportunity. Uh and if you'd like to do it online, I guess, speak up and announce yourself and. Have to be unmuted, though. I'm looking at our tech director. Anything?
Yeah, I I do not see anyone.
All right. All right, so we will we will move on then. Uh we apologize if you were tempted to. Uh so we went to item five, consent agenda items. Uh five point one, checks number two zero two three through two zero two nine, three five eight nine three through three five nine nine eight and three zero four seven four zero through three zero four seven five four. And EFT is number one one nine two through one two zero three and five zero nine seven nine six through five zero nine eight zero nine. Item five point two of April payroll distribution report. Five point three, land lease agreement with Prairie Dairy Farms. And item five point four, personnel. Do we have any revisions to those items? All right, here you know, the consent agenda items are approved as presented. We will move on to item six, action items, and six point one, appointment of ECS EC director.
We'd like to refer that to as exec. Um we would like to recommend, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Matthew Johns, who's here with us this evening. Um he interviewed with all of the participating districts in exec, uh Bago, Concord, Fairfield, Goshen, Middlebury, and Wani. Um he was our unanimous choice. He comes to us with a wealthy experience in South Bend Public Schools, uh working with both the public schools in South Bend, but the local schools as well. It's nice that he has that much experience with that, many different schools, different students. Um through all of that, he is a tireless and endless advocate for students, especially those students with special needs. We're recommending that you approve the next new exec director.
Uh do I have a motion, please, to appoint Matt Johns to the Essex director?
I so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And the move and second, and do we have any discussion from the board? All right, here you know, we will take a roll call vote. Jose Elzade, yea or nay?
Yay.
Mario Garber, yea or nay?
Yea.
Keith Goodman, yea or nay? Felipe Moreno, yea or nay?
Yea.
Roger Nussinger, yea or nay? Amanda Pauls, yea or nay?
Yeah.
Bradwell, yea. Pass it down. Congratulations and welcome.
Did you want to say anything?
I I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working with all corporations. Uh excited. Ready for um a new opportunity and I just want to thank everybody that supported me during that time. And um it was a great interview and I think all the corporations have great things going. I just uh hope to contribute to Austin corporations. And thank you to this board and uh the other corporations.
Welcome to Elkhart County.
And you might slip out. We told him it was okay.
You know, everyone's like leaving.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. All right, and we will move on to item six point two, approval of summer school.
Uh yes, we are. Um you know, we have been um looking at options for summer school. Um we are looking to do to hold off on the K through six or K through five um summer school this year. Uh hopefully, we can do a jump start for a couple of weeks right before school starts, when we can actually have students in because one of the reasons we've been talking to s- uh to staff and to some of them, and as they've noticed, student participation is starting to decline um with kind of the people are getting tired of the e-learning piece. Um some of our students who probably would be asked to attend summer school are some of the ones who aren't doing that virtually now. So our goal would be to do a in-person jump start for two weeks. At the secondary level, we are, it will be all virtual and it will start on June first and go for four weeks.
I would add at the middle school for grades seven and eight, those lessons will be virtual, but they will be synchronous and they'll be live at that time. So the students will have to log in at a certain time and the teaching will be live. That's the more one-on-one help that our some of the neighbors need. At high school, though, it will be more traditional and go to the X program.
Great. We are also um, there's also a memo about extended school year for our students and our our special education um population. Uh and they will continue to uh receive tho- that services uh virtually, I believe. Mrs. Erickson is here. If you have any questions about the extended school year for specialized students.
All right, thank you all for that. Uh do we have a motion, please, to approve item six point two? The move, do we have a second, please?
A second.
Got to be quicker than that on phone. Uh Keith made the motion. Yep. I need uh questions or discussion from the board. All right, here you know, we will have a roll call vote. Yea or nay?
Yay.
Mario Garber, yea or nay?
Yea.
Goodman, yea or nay? Felipe Moreno, yea or nay?
Yea.
Roger Nussinger? Amanda?
Yeah.
Bradwell, yea. Pass it down. Thank you. We will move on to item six point three, approval of board policy seven zero three five to student mental and behavioral suicide records.
Yeah, thank you. We had this as a discussion item at the last board meeting. Um I didn't receive any questions or clarification, so we are bringing it forward and would ask for your approval as presented.
Do we have a motion, please, to approve item six point three? Second?
A second.
A second. Uh any uh discussion or questions from the board? And then roll call vote, please. Jose Elzade, yea or nay?
Yay.
Mario Garber, yea or nay?
Yea.
Goodman, yea or nay? Felipe Moreno, yea or nay?
Yea.
Astraea? Amanda Pauls?
Yeah.
Bradwell, yea. Pass it down. Thank you. And lastly, item six point four is approval of phase four hail damage preparedness.
Okay, uh we're asking for your approval tonight. This is uh insurance coverage uh for the athletic facilities. Most of them had shingle roofs and they are getting foot lather plays, dugouts and so forth. So it's been awarded to Graber Roofing for a hundred, a hundred and seven thousand eight hundred. The alternate is the different type of shingle that the corporation is responsible for paying for that. At fifteen thousand nine, one hundred twenty-four thousand seven hundred. These will be the last project that is done. Uh these are postponed until the rest of everything else is completed. So it'll be more towards mid to late summer.
All right, uh do we have a motion, please, for item six point four?
I'm moving. We approve. For Facebook.
A second, please? Second, and uh any discussion or questions? All right, here you know. Jose Elzade, yea or nay?
Yay.
Mario Garber, yea or nay?
Yea.
Goodman? Felipe Moreno?
Yea.
Nussinger? Amanda Pauls?
Yeah.
Bradwell, yea. Pass it down. Thank you. Uh item seven, discussion items, which we do not have any. So we will move on to item eight, closing items. Eight point one, eight miscellaneous items from the board tonight. Uh eight point two, administrative items.
I would just like to remind everybody that the next board meeting will be at Goshen High School in the Learning Time. A renewed learning time that we might have. Um from a also just reminder, because of all the staging here, we are moving our offices. This is our last week here. The week from today, we'll be operating on Goshen High School in various places. Call, email, text, we'll let you know where we're looking for sure. But board meeting is then starting next one into the.
So we come in the door.
Probably come in.
You don't know which door yet.
Probably by the by door M, the main door, probably in the cafeteria because it'll be work being done on the main at door M. Start redoing a little bit entrance and the restroom there.
Further to the left.
Okay. The cafeteria door.
Okay, okay. Cafeteria door.
But right, it's right there. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're meeting four thirty at.
Four thirty, thank you, at the at GIS. Anybody who's interested in the tour. And then the actual board meeting will drive back and be at Goshen High School. Thank you.
Um no diplomas?
Diplomas, uh Barry, are you on here? They uh will be arriving soon. Uh we're tentatively looking at graduation uh more at the end of June and sort of in person in stages. Uh we'll get that finalized soon. But we have a little more time to sign the diplomas, but they should be here when Barry.
Yeah, Dr. Woodworth, as soon as I get those, I'll start. They're supposed to be here um either the it's either next week or the last week in May, but we'll get them um in plenty of time, I think.
Okay, so we'll start them.
All right, and then eight, item eight point three, German, do I have a motion, please? Do I have a second? All those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
We are in German. Thank everyone for joining us tonight and thank you for our presenters online. Uh have a good week.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.